One more person just connecting.
Okay. As we know, some people connect the entire.
Yeah, right, right. That's true. All right, I think all the the first wave is loaded in now, so you are good to go whenever you'd like.
Okay, um, let me know when you've started us.
Yep, we're recording.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Town of McCandless Meeting of Town Council for March the twenty second, twenty twenty one. We'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Clunin.
Thank you. Well, everybody, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um, thank you very much. We'll start with a couple of announcements. The North Hills Cog Leaf Compost will be delivered on three twenty six. And all the gardeners are anxiously waiting for that rich black gold to show up down by the Heritage Center and also another delivery on four nine. Um, Bob, do we wait to the following day to let people start picking it up or that exact day?
I know we like to. It would be, it would be helpful if they waited until the following day so that our trucks and their vehicles aren't
Covered in mulch.
Yeah, and Jeff Jeff Shaneman just texted me, says after three o'clock, the day of delivery will be fine.
All right, perfect. So after three o'clock, three twenty six and four nine.
They'll be there at three oh five.
Three, yeah, there'll be a line. Um, the best is on the top. Um, the Environmental Advisory Committee is having their spring roadside cleanup um, on April tenth. If you haven't signed up already, please do. But you can find that on the website, how to sign up and what time and and all the details on that. Um, so let's get into our, we have a presentation today and it is going to be presented by the Suburban Whitetail Deer Management. And they have a PowerPoint presentation. Are those gentlemen here? I see Luke.
Uh, I I have got the PowerPoint loaded up. If we need it, I just need the names of the people that should be on screen right now.
Okay, um, I, you know what? I think Luke.
Okay.
But I.
Let's try Luke.
Okay, let's, let's try Luke. I'm sorry, didn't write those names down.
No, that's, that's okay.
Mike Sandoval, too.
And Mike. That's right. That's right. Mike. That's right, Mike.
Okay, I think I see him on here. Usually if we can get one person, we're okay, because they'll tell us, they'll tell us who else.
All right, we're gonna get Mike going here. Hi, Mike.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. Um, do you want to just introduce yourselves and then we'll have RJ put the the presentation up?
Yeah, that'll work.
That'll work. Go ahead, Luke. You can start.
Sure. Um, first of all, I'd just like to thank everybody for having us. Uh, also, everybody who who uh is a part of this. Um, I know it's been a long time coming for you folks, so we're all very excited uh for having us. If there's, what we're gonna do is uh, like Kim said, we were gonna have a short presentation uh for everybody. Uh, after that, uh, we'll take some questions, um, if anybody has any, and then we can go from there. But uh, I know you guys have a lot to do tonight, so uh, if you wanna jump into the uh, the PowerPoint, um, we can get started.
All right, let me load that. This is the one we want, right?
Yes.
Okay, I have it in PDF form, so I hope that's okay. I'll just flip through the pages instead of the slides.
That's fine. Um, next slide, Suburban Whitetail Management LLC. I want to have to thank you. We were founded um not too long ago with by myself, Mike Clambo, and by Luke Leonard. Um, we have an extensive history in hunting. Uh, Luke has been hunting for twenty eight years, myself, I've been hunting for twenty three years. Both of us have been hunting in the area uh for the duration of that time, so we're familiar with the area, we're familiar with what happens in this area um as far as deer go and and the environment in which which you were presented. We are, we currently manage the Franklin Park and the Ross Township programs. Um, we took over the Franklin Park program last year, um, and we started with Ross Township last year, and that was their first year. Both have been working extremely well. Franklin Park has been running for four or five years now with this, under this program. Previously, it was under a different company, but we took over that company and we progressed and continued the program. Ross Township, again, that was their first year last year, and it went very well. We're a safety-first company, so we believe that in order for this program to work for both the citizens and the hunters and everybody involved, an extreme level of safety has to be adhered to. And that is one of our top goals, is to always be at that level of safety, so there's never any kind of incidents. Any property we hunt is, uh, any property that we place hunters on is covered under the PA Statute sixty eight four seven seven dash one, which is basically, and anybody can read into it, um, if you Google it. It protects landowners from accidents that happen on their property. Um, if they give permission to somebody to hunt their property, they're covered under that statute, but we take things a little further. Um, just so everybody feels more comfortable, we are fully insured company. That, and our insurance covers not only our company, it covers our hunters that are on anybody's property as well as the property owner and any, any facilities on that property in case something were to happen. All of our hunts are conducted in accordance with all state game laws. That's first and foremost. Those can find, be found on the Pennsylvania State Game Commission's website. So all of our hunters by law have to adhere to those rules and regulations set forth by the state. On top of that, all of our hunters also must comply with our own bylaws, and they're just a little more stringent. We put some things into effect and go above and beyond to make sure that we have control and transparency throughout the whole process. And we'll get into that a little bit later as as we go through this presentation. We only conduct archery hunts currently, so it's by bow and arrow only. We want people to think of our program and our company as a conservation tool. It's not a trophy hunt. We're not out there looking to kill giant deer, big box, and we're out there to help townships and communities such as yourselves control the population within your township. Uh, we know it's a, it's an issue in many townships in this area, our deer population. It's very robust, and it does need scaled back. Uh, we're not looking to eliminate the deer. We love deer. We wanna be a part of it, and we want deer to be on their, on the landscape for for generations to come. But the point that we're at right now in a lot of this area, especially in the greater Pittsburgh area, is we're beyond the compare, caring capacity for the given landscape. Our hunting services cost a township, borough, and/or landowners nothing, which is a very important thing. Especially to us, because we feel that people pay enough in taxes. And we feel that those taxes should be put to good use within the township for things that need that attention. We can conduct this with zero money from the township or any other persons. We generate all any things that, how we pay for, what we need to pay for is based off of our memberships, which is the hunters that we pay, uh, that we put on the landscape. So they're the ones who are funding us, not the townships. When, in general, we're here to help the community. Um, we recognize that there's a problem with the, with the deer population, and we feel strongly that this is a great tool to help control and bring down that that population. We have the next slide, please. So basically, how our program is run, we break it down, we like to break it down into four categories, which would be the township or borough, private properties, which would be landowners or private businesses. Another component is hunters, and the final component would be wildlife. Next slide. So diving into those a little more deeply, the township or borough properties, these are gonna be public properties owned by the township or borough. They could be green spaces, green spaces or vacant land. It could be parks owned by the township or borough. So you're looking at community parks, walking trails, wildlife areas. Those are the type of properties that we're looking to place hunters on. We check, before any of this goes into motion, we check all these properties for safety hazards for both for the public and hu- and the hunters. Examples would be walking trails, proximity to roads, things of that nature. After we've looked at the maps and identified all those pieces of property from township and burrows, and we've walked them and identified any safety hazards, we submit a lit, we submit a list of huntable properties back to the township. And the township tells us what properties they want to be hunted. So if there's pieces of property that the township feels isn't safe to be hunted, above and beyond what we've already identified, it's, they're well within their means and their rights to say, we don't want anybody on this piece of property. And we respect that. Um, not all properties are suitable for hunting. And a lot of these things come down to access um to the property, so another thing that we're looking for when we're looking at these properties is, are they landlocked? Can we get access to these properties? And then, once we have that information, we pass it along to township, and we look to overcome any obstacles that might be hindering us from getting on a piece of property. At that time, once the township has agreed upon what, what properties they want hunted, we send over a, basically a PDF format of a bunch of side of permission slips. They will sign those permission slips and send them back to us. These permission slips are passed out to the hunter uh that will be placed on that individual property, and they're required to have that with them at all times, so that way, if they get stopped by anybody, they can prove, produce proof that they're allowed to be hunting legally on that property. What we find is that oftentimes, and I know it's happening currently, that there's people who are hunting these properties without permission. They think just because it's township-owned land and it's, and it's that it's open to hunting, which is not the case. Um, the township controls who hunts their property. It's not open to anybody, so that's why we have the um signed permission slips, and it tells them who's allowed on it, what piece, what piece of property they're allowed on, and where to park. Uh, next slide, please. The next component would be private properties. Uh, so this would be individuals or homeowners or large businesses that have vacant land or larger tracts of land. We do conduct hunts on smaller parcels of property. Um, we've go, we've gone down to sizes of property of less than one acre, and it really depends whether your hu- your property is huntable or not, um, for a private individual, really depends on, it's very situational, so we check all of these properties for safety, and one of the things that we're looking for is, you know, setbacks, how far away from houses, where the property situated, how close are neighbors, how close are roads? These are all things that we're looking at when we're analyzing these properties and make sure that they're safe. How do we get the properties? Um, private property owners reach out to us directly at suburbanwhitetailpa@gmail.com. They can call us. Um, private owner, private property owners also tend to reach out to the township or borough that they're in, looking for help, um, getting relief from these deer, and we'll refer that as a referral. So oftentimes, once a township hears from a private landowner, they'll send us the information about the landowner, and we can reach out to them, or they can give the private landowner our information, and they can reach out to us. Also, neighbors and word of mouth um is a great way for people to find out about our program. Uh, we do at times approach uh businesses and landowners with larger tracts of land for permission. We do that on a select basis. If it's a key property that we feel will really help boost the program forward and help the program to get into certain areas, especially if we're having a problem with a lot of deer in one area. Again, we check all the properties for safety hazards um for both the public and also the hunter. So we're looking for neighbors, people's pets, homes, um, specific safety distances. Uh, state law says we have to be fifty yards away from a dwelling. Um, that can be, that can be circumvented by having the landowner give us specific written permission that we're allowed to be hunting within their safety zone. We do that on a case-by-case basis, um, if the situation allows us to. Um, again, we're looking for parking and access to these properties, um, and if we have any problems that we need to work out with the landowner. Again, we have a lot of people that contact us looking for relief from the deer and for us to come in and help them. And the sad truth is that we just can't help everybody because of their situation with their property. It doesn't warrant us being in there. Once we've talked with the property owners about their property and specific needs, they suddenly then sign a permission slip again, and that allows us to place a hunter on their property. It should be known that we have one hunter on a property, um, and that hunter hunts that property all year. So it's not a revolving door of hunters. It's a single person all year on the same property. After we have the signed permission, permission slip, then we go ahead and place the hunter on there. And we'll continue on from there. Can I have the next slide, please? Uh, that brings us to the actual hunters themselves. Uh, we look for hunters that live, live within the community first. Um, so we would start with looking for hunters, and we've had a number of people from within your township reach out to us in regards to this program. If it does get off the ground, that would like to be a part of the program. So first and foremost, we place them on the properties first. If we can't find enough local hunters, we'll then open the hunting opportunities up to other hunters that live in the surrounding areas. Uh, we're looking for a multi, multitude of qualities in our hunters. We're looking for someone who's ethical, responsible, safe, and active. And those, we, we find all those qualities out in our interview process. So we have a series of questions that we ask them to find out more about them, their hunting history, you know, the type of stuff, the style of hunting that they prefer. This program isn't for all types of hunters. It requires a very specific type of person who's comfortable in this program. We then put our, all of our hunters through a required archery proficiency test that we require them to be, it's basically an accuracy test to make sure that they can ethically put an arrow into a vital zone at a set distance. Again, hunters must follow all state laws while hunting. Then they must also adhere to the Suburban Whitetail bylaws. These are a little more controlled than state laws. To start with, they must have all their arrows marked with a personal identification number that we issue them. That way, if an arrow goes missing and someone finds it, if we can look at the arrow and find out whose it is, and we can trace it back to them, it's another level of count accountability. We require all of our hunters to fill out a log um that keeps track of their hours hunted, the number of deer they saw, the number of deer they harvested, and they return all those numbers back to us. We put it in an easy-to-read format, and we return that to the township every month um for them to review. And then, at the end of the year, we put together a comprehensive package that has all this information broken down a little bit further and lets the township know how successful the program was. We have a take-out-what-you-take-in rule, and this is basically a general rule that whatever you take into the woods, we want our hunters to take it out. We don't want anybody leaving anything in the woods or a field that is gonna deter from the natural habitat. Also, all successful hunters must remove any field dressings from the field. So these would be the entrails after they have harvested, harvested a deer. They're not allowed to leave the entrails in the woods for people to walk on, dogs to get into, for birds to get into. We like to keep it nice and clean, so we require them to remove all of that from the field. All hunters must harvest a doe before they're allowed to harvest a buck. This rule we have in place to help promote the harvesting of the deer so that we don't get people in there that are just looking to harvest a big buck and be done. We want people in there that are gonna be actively hunting all year continually, continually harvesting deer off the landscape. All hunters must donate their first in every third harvest that they take. Um, in this, we have a, there's a program that's set up with the state. It's called Hunter Sharing the Harvest. Last year with Jess Ross Township, we donated, I believe, his twenty-three deer to this program, which equated about four thousand meals that we were provided for the, for hunters sharing the harvest, which was, goes out to local food banks. All of our hunters will have a permission slip to be on their specific property and their property only. They're also given a parking pass, so if a patrol officer comes and gets a phone call about a suspicious suspicious car in park somewhere, when the officer gets there, they'll see that we have, they have the parking pass in there and that the car is supposed to be there. We submit a list of all of our hunters and their license plates to the police department that they have on file. Helps to alleviate some of the issues that may arise with parking situations. Um, it, we don't wanna, the last thing we wanna do is be wasting the township municipal's time, especially the police department. Again, all of our hunters are assigned to a specific property, and they're only allowed to hunt that property within the, within the township for the entire season. We expect all of our hunters to be courteous to the non-hunting community. Uh, we don't care if someone comes up yelling and screaming at them that they're doing wrong and they're not supposed to be there. We just ask them to be polite and contact us, and we handle the situations as they arise. Today, we have yet to have major incident where someone's, where someone's that upset that we have any kind of issues. Can I have the next slide, please? Finally, we have the wildlife. Suburban Whitetail was developed to help wildlife survive on their landscape. By, by conducting controlled hunts, we're helping all wildlife have better quality of life. So what we're running into right now is the deer are so overpopulated that they're overeating and overbrowsing the landscape, and this takes away and detracts from all wildlife, not just the deer. Our current program is for archery whitetail hunting only. We can offer other, other hunting services for wildlife, such as turkey or predators. That's something that individual landowners or townships need to approach us about, and we can do that if they feel that it's something that they need. If we can help balance deer populations, we can all help wildlife in that area live on a sustainable landscape. That is our main objective here. Just to share um a quick overview that we're not looking to take all the deer off the landscape. A lot of people might think that's the case, but it's really not. Last year in Ross Township, we had seventeen hunters harvest forty deer. That's not a lot of deer, considering how many are in that area. They're still way overpopulated. This program takes a very long time, talking multiple years, for you to see a decrease in the, in the deer population in the specific area. But it does have long-term success. And that's the kind of solution that you're looking for when you're putting together a deer management plan. Can I have the next slide, please? So in summary, Suburban Whitetail works with the township, boroughs, and private landowners as well as businesses. We like to think that we connect hunters in our community in a safe and effective way. This program is at no cost to any landowner, including townships and boroughs. The program is safe. All parties involved are fully insured. Um, the program is designed to help conserve wildlife and habitat. This program is not a short-term program. It'll take years to see the full benefits of the program. We're starting to see those benefits pay off in Franklin Park. The, the program has been in place for four to five years, and on their, on their township parks that we've been hunting, and they've had hunters on for four or five years, we are seeing a drastic reduction in the number of deer sighted on those properties. We hope this program will be one of the main tools in helping your township or borough have a better habitat for wildlife. Again, this is only one factor. This program is one factor in your deer management plan. Educational resources about hunting and programs like ours can be found at the Pennsylvania State Game Commission website and at the Community Deer Advisor website. You can reach out to us via email at suburbanwhitetailpa@gmail.com, or you can give us a follow on Instagram at SuburbanWhitetailPA. At this time, I've concluded my part. I would like to open it up to any questions, and I think Mr. Leonard will answer those.
Thank you, Mike.
Um, are there council members that have some questions?
I have one.
Councilmember Swire?
So can I ask what the fees for Ross and Franklin Park, what they, what they are, if you guys know them?
They're zero dollars. Yes, uh, no matter if it's Franklin Park or Ross or McCandless, um, our company is funded by the members.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Clunin?
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation, and I was just curious. I didn't see like times of hunting, like, is that something that is discussed between the, the hunter and the property owner to set up what's allowed, when it's not allowed, et cetera?
That, we follow um all the Pennsylvania State Game Laws, which they have designated hours uh in hunting seasons. It starts around the mid, uh, they, they haven't officially gave us a, a date yet, but usually it's the second week of September. Uh, and there's some breaks in between, um, that, and it runs all the way to almost the end of January, with, like I said, a few breaks in between there, so um, that's what we follow.
As far as, I'd like to add on to that, as far as actual hunting hours go, PA State Law says it's a half an hour before, or half an hour after sunrise to a half an hour, you have to be out of the woods after sunset, and those times change based on the day of the year. In certain instances, if we have a private residence that requests, you know, we be out of there or we can't show up till a certain time, we do accommodate them, but it really puts constraints on the effectiveness of the program.
Thank you. Any other um questions? Um, Councilmember Terrell?
Have you guys ever had an injury or an incident on a hunt site?
No, sir.
No, good.
Um, yes, Mr. Graham?
Just one quick question. They, uh, how do hunters handle a deer that's been shot that may run onto a property that isn't subject to permission?
That's a good question. Um, yeah, what they'll have to do, uh, if the deer travels farther than they would like, they have to contact that property owner uh before they proceed. If the property owner um denies them access, more than likely, they will call us. Uh, we'll try to reason with the property owner. And then, if they still disagree, uh, a lot of times, what we'll, we'll do is we'll have the actual, we work very closely with the Pennsylvania Game Commission. Uh, we'll call those folks up. Uh, they'll try to gain access, but uh, even if that doesn't work, unfortunately, it's up to the homeowner, uh, or the property owner, I should say, to grant access. And we, we've never had anybody deny us, um, knock on wood, yet, but uh, we never know, but uh, we, we have to ask for permission first.
And to add on to that, um, our proficiency test that we have in place really helps to reduce the number of incidents that we have that happen. It makes, it helps to ensure that we have archers who are accurate and can put a lethal shot that uh makes a deer expire in a very quick manner. We've had very few incidents where we've had a situation like that.
Thank you.
Um, I had a question. I noticed in the presentation that it said all successful hunters must remove any field dressing from the field, which I like, but I noticed in reading your bylaws that it says, under no circumstances are animals field dressed in wooden town lands.
under no circumstances are animals field dressed in wooden town lands. Private lands only dress if the owner allows. All field dressing must be removed from the field. Those seem a little in conflict.
Yeah, that, that's correct. Now, on, on township uh or borough properties, there's a lot of foot traffic. Um, that's why we want everything to come out of the woods um with the hunter. Uh, on private properties, um, i- it's up to the discretion of the property owner. Um, if the hunter is allowed to field dress the deer there or they have to remove it as well. Um, it, it makes it a lot easier for the hunter, um, obviously. But uh, again, that's, that's up to the property owner. We discuss that with them. Um, usually, and I'll be honest with you, uh, that evening, the raccoons, coyotes, foxes, uh possums and everything else, uh, that, 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 those entrails are gone that night. But uh, on, like I said, on, on township properties, uh, we don't want to uh have that issue.
So in the bylaws where it said that they aren't field dressed, is field dressed where you take all the insides out?
Yes.
Okay, so the bylaw says that under no circumstances are animals field dressed in on town lands. So that means they would do it somewhere else, then? We wouldn't even have to worry about that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to be clear, um, because it seemed like maybe it was a little bit different in the presentation. I just, I just wanted to be clear. We don't want to we just want to know what we're getting into.
Yes, no, that's, that's fine.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions? Okay, um, would it be possible for us to put your presentation on our social media sites as part of our public awareness? Is, would that be all right? Would?
Yeah, that's fine. If you want the actual PowerPoint, I have that. I can send that into you, or you can use the PDF version that I supplied you guys with beforehand. Otherwise, just let me know. I can get.
Okay, I'll let John Bajowski decide on that because he knows all those tech things. Um, it will just be good as we start getting some of this information out to the community to um you know, just put it as many places as we can. We actually have um a deer sighting um on our McCandless and Me site where people can um uh put little pegs where they um have seen deer, which is pretty interesting too. It'll be, if all this works out, it'll be um give you.
I would like, I would like to add to what you're saying. That is a great idea. Um, the other townships that we work in, they do not have that. Um, that is a great tool. Um, it helps us if we, the program goes forward, it helps us to be able to identify hotspots where deer are located and we can focus on those areas. It's a great tool.
Good, good.
I, didn't occur to me until afterward. Um, but just out of curiosity, have you gotten interest locally from either local hunters or landowners directly?
Absolutely. Yeah, we actually have a small waiting list of uh McCandless residents uh that want to be a part of the program. Um, not only the landowners, but hunters as well.
Excellent.
Um, anything else? Gentlemen, thank you so much for your time and your presentation. Um, we'll be uh moving forward with the next step. I'll stay in touch with you and let you know how things are going and um we'll move um forward from here. Thank you again so much for your time and, and for this great program that the community is as so many communities are in need of, so we appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you have, if you'd like to make a comment, uh, public comment time, um, down at the bottom of your screen, you can see where it says uh chat and you can put your name and your um address there and um, I guess Bob has control of things and he will bring you up one at a time in order that you put your name in and that you have five minutes to speak. So Bob, do we have some people signed up?
Here, if we need me.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, RJ. I thought you gave me control.
He does have co-hosts just in case, but I'm here. Um, it looks like I've, I've got one person so far who has signed up, so let me try and bring her on. And if anyone else signs up, I'll loop them in after that. Um, just looking for the square on the zoom here. Okay, we've got, um, I, I sent her a mic and camera request, but um it's the user Kathy Martins, but I believe that she was indicating Lynn Atman would like to speak.
Okay, all right, Kathy, we can see you and we might be able to hear you. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, all right, you, go ahead. We're ready. We're ready for you to start.
Okay, hi, I am Lynn Atman. I just wanted to say that our upcoming litter pickup is April the tenth, as we have talked about it in the past, and um we're excited about it. Bob, John Bajowski said that uh the spots are increasing all the time, so that's great news. I wanted to say a special thank you to Kim Zachary, Angela Woods and Shelley Spahnholz for um coming to the cleanups in the past many times, so we appreciate that. And I just wanted to reach out to the other council members. Some of them, um, you are newer, some um are veterans there, but uh wanted to invite you and extend to you um coming to the cleanup. We would welcome you greatly. We also would uh appreciate if you reach out to in your ward to see if there's any interested um residents that would, you know, be a help. And also if you had any input as to any roads in your wards that you felt maybe, we do focus on a lot of the same roads, but we uh wanna, you know, reach out to all McCandless. Maybe there's some other roads that need a little more help that we haven't done in the past, so uh, that's where we'd like your input. So if you'd like to come and join us, we'd love to have you there um and uh your, your input as well. Um, on a good note, today, noticed that some signs, Bob, that came down on McKnight Road, so they were the GNC and the COVID signs, so that was really welcome. Our sign ordinance is out there and uh I know that was really a welcome sight to see that they've come down. And I'm also looking forward to the new code enforcement officers that are coming on board, whoever they may be. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Um, RJ, is there anyone else?
I do not have anyone else signed up in the chat box at this time.
Okay. All right, um, let's move on. Is um there a, are there any questions or comments or changes that need to be made in the minutes from March eighth, twenty twenty-one? Okay, all right, is there a motion to um adopt these minutes?
Still moved.
Okay, right, Councilmember Clunin? Uh, and Councilmember Spahnholz? Okay, again, I'll call for any changes, amendments, corrections. There are none. All those in favor of adopting the minutes from March eighth, twenty twenty-one is submitted to council and decayed by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Liaison reports. Activity Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Uh, the minutes are in the council folder and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Just wanted to say our bingo last week was another great success and we want to give a special thank you to Marshall Stack and his wonderful pup, Marshall, who are our guest bingo callers last week. They did a fabulous job.
Uh, it, when are, when are we um interviewing for your um open position?
We are working to schedule that possibly as early as Friday morning.
Perfect, great. Good. Anything else from activities?
Any questions? That concludes my report then. Thank you.
Thank you, EAC.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the minutes of the last March tenth, that EAC meeting are in councils packets. Um, the only thing that I would like to make special note of is that uh it was at that meeting that the University of Pittsburgh Capstone Project students um presented their two projects um both related to small business and eco districts, which involves small business in McCandless. It was a great presentation, really bright students and uh um John Bajowski did record um that portion of the EAC meeting. Um, and I'm not sure, I didn't check before this meeting, but it either is or will be um available for um council members to review at their convenience. And I, I definitely ask you to do so if at all possible. Uh, any questions?
I agree with uh Councilmember Spahnholz. I attended that meeting and what a bright um group of young people. Incredibly impressive.
Agreed. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, um, thank you. The Financial Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center.
Uh, the most recent meet, uh, meeting minutes are in your packet. Just, uh, I don't think it's in the meeting minutes, but I, unless something changed, I believe they are now open again. Uh, ten to four, I think are the hours, and then there's limited hours on the weekend, but uh, that's not in the minutes, but just pointing that out, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
All right, thank you. Uh, Junior Councilmember? Raj?
Yep, hello.
Hi.
Um, well, um, everything you need to know about the recent meeting was, is just in uh, report I sent out. If there are any questions about it, please feel free to email me um or ask any questions. Yeah.
How's the Instagram going?
Going well, yeah, it's going well. We, we're going, uh, we have solid amount of followership and we have a decent amount of postings um each and every week to month, um, few weeks, so. It's going, yeah, sure.
Raj, is there any way to advertise that at school at all for citizens, for um students that are maybe interested in, you know, politics or current events or anything? Are there any?
Yeah, I, I can try figuring that out, actually. Yeah, for sure, for sure.
That might be something they, that, that particular group, possibly.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Raj, a quick question, Madam President?
Councilmember Smith?
Raj, I think if, if I remember right, I saw your name on one of the library reports that we got. Are you working with the library?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I went to the library to, um, they, they have some new things and then they also wanted to show on, like they wanted to, I don't know, like help us out a little bit with the Instagram, give us some good pictures. So I, I went there actually and I took a few good, um, a lot of pictures there, and if you follow our Instagram, you'll be able to see it. Um, yeah, but yeah, that's what, right, yeah, it was there. Library.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'd also like to congratulate you on being selected for the varsity tennis team.
Thank you.
You didn't think, congratulations. You didn't think I knew that.
Yeah, no, yeah.
There are only, what, three members? Three, three people? What was it?
Three.
They were selected?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay, I, I could, maybe I made that up.
Quite a few people, yeah.
Well, congra, well, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right, McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority.
Thank you, Madam President. The um, the board minutes uh from the last meeting as well as, actually, they might have been, I think they're from the prior meeting. I don't have the latest. The latest meeting was on, on March sixteenth, so um you have the February minutes. Um, but you do have um mostly up-to-date financial reports that are all in the um committee packets. Um, any questions or comments? You're not?
I am, I am. That's all right. I am impressed with um the streamlining and the cost savings that the ambulance authority um are working hard to find in institutes, so kudos to them. Nice job.
They are. They're actually in a better cash position right now than they were last year and um uh their subscriptions are, they're kind of in that process, but um response rates are down in subscriptions, but um subscription dollars are up, so. Um, there's some good news coming out of there and hard work on their part as well.
I haven't seen any information about subscription coming out on the town website. Is any of that coming out on our media?
Uh, it did. Ours is, oh, they're in this, they're in, I mean, you can still, you can still subscribe, but the um subscription drives um from a Candace are over for now. Um, the next thing we'll see is the capital campaign, which we've offered them the ability to utilize all of our social media platforms. Right now, they're doing the other, three other of the local communities that they suffer.
Perfect.
Campaign.
Excellent, good. And anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, MIDA?
Yeah, a short meeting, the highlight of it was that they granted, I think it was sixteen thousand dollars to the library to buy two uh book checkout uh computers, for lack of a better term. Uh, and uh, uh, everything else is in the packet, meeting minutes, et cetera, so there's any questions above and beyond that? Gladly answer any. Seeing none, thank you.
Um, the Sanitary Authority?
The minutes are in your packet. I think uh the most recent minutes aren't yet available, I don't think, but it's the, the February minutes are in there. Um, and things are plugging along there. If you have any questions, let me know.
Um, North Hills Cog?
Minutes from the January meeting were included in your packets. Let me know if you have any questions.
Public Library Authority, Northland?
Again, the meeting minutes are in your packet. Um, I do know, can't remember if it was in the minutes or not, in this set of minutes or not. They are getting close to having to do some work on that front patio uh area. There's, the, that's been something that they've been planning on for a long time, so uh, that, I don't know exactly when it's coming up, but um that is something they're looking at as, as being a little bit closer to the near future than, than the far future.
I know the gala is um coming up also soon, though I think it's going to be a little bit different because the social distancing was canceled last year. So I already have my tickets for that, so everyone be looking forward um for, to participating and sponsoring our library through the um through that activity, that good fundraiser. Anything else, Councilmember Smith? Oh, yes, Mike.
Uh, David, I saw in the minutes that they got a second PPP loan. Is, is that for certain? And do you know the dollar amount?
Uh, I cannot remember the dollar amount. Um, I can't remember the dollar amount, but they, yes, they did get approved for that second PPP loan, if I remember right. Um, and that may be related to the uh, the monies that are being moved over from the general fund to the um, to the, whatever they call it. I don't think they call it a reserve fund, but the capital account. Um, and I think, I don't know if those two things are related or not. Uh, but it, it, they maybe, I, I just, I can't remember. But there was a, uh, you know, a substantial two hundred thousand dollar or so uh transfer from the, from the general account over to that capital account, which is again, if I remember right, that's the account where the capital improvements like for that front patio will be coming out of.
Do you know if they plan in their budget to receive that second PPP loan? I don't, I, I don't recall.
I, I do not remember. I, I don't remember. I, if I answered, I'd be guessing, so.
Fair enough.
Any other questions? Okay, um, there was no meeting of the North Pittsburgh Community Development Authority. Um, next, the Personnel Board.
Uh, the meeting minutes are in your packets. I also want to point out that tomorrow we do have a meeting at nine AM. Uh, if anyone would like to join us. Um, also, I know in the past we had mentioned that we, we were gonna have the police, there was a police forum, community forum in Franklin Park tomorrow night. That has actually been canceled, so if you guys are looking for the link, um, it's not gonna be there. They're gonna have to reschedule it. Um, and then also looking to the future, April twenty-sixth, we will have the volunteers. And then also looking to the future, April twenty sixth, we will have the Volunteer Social Worker Program presented to council. If you guys have any questions, let me know.
April twenty sixth?
Yes.
Oh, you're asking to have that put on the agenda?
Bob, are you, did you include that already?
I have it noted on my calendar.
Okay, all right, because we, I didn't think we'd made that agenda yet, so. Okay. Also, the personnel meeting is Wednesday, the twenty fourth, tomorrow's Tuesday.
Oh, geez, yeah, I'm off. Yeah, sorry.
All right. Any questions for Councilmember Swagger? Okay, all right, Planning Commission. Everything that's going on, the Planning Commission, you're going to see down under New Business, so that's, that's coming up and. We'll take all your questions then. Technology Committee.
The most recent minutes are included in your packets. Please let me know if you have any questions.
All right, hearing none. Firefired Fires Steering Committee did not have a meeting, I believe. Zoning Hearing Board.
Thank you. And the minutes, the most recent meeting minutes are in your packet and happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. I've added the ad hoc committees of council on here, just so we could kind of keep up with the progress of those committees. And we have the Stormwater Management Committee. Who, who is, who's chairing that committee? Who's submitting the minutes on that committee? Is that Councilmember Spawn Halls? Okay. Did you have any comments you wanted to make on that report? Did anyone have any questions for? For that committee?
What you would have seen in your packet is. Back in two thousand twenty, we created a kind of a stormwater report that was intended to capture. You know, capture kind of most all of the things that are going on in McCandless related to stormwater. And that report was updated last month and we had a subcommittee meeting last month. The minutes of that. Meeting were in your packet and. We've begun to, we're going to kind of start a series of stormwater articles, topics, updates. In McMail and the first of those kind of a general. General article is going, I think will appear in the next McMail. It'll come out in April. Any questions? Any, anybody? Lots going on?
I was lucky enough to preview that article that Councilmember Spawn Halls put together. It's very informative. It's quite good. So look forward to, to everyone saying that. Any questions? All right, Grant Writing Committee, who's, who's chairing that? Councilmember Clonan or you?
Yeah, I don't know that we're official chair, but there are notes in your packet. I think at this point, this is just trying to check out the possibilities and. In addition to finding what the possible options are, is looking at where we, if we did decide to go this route. Where those efforts would be directed. So we'll be doing a lot of discussing. Moving forward to get those decisions made and presented to council.
When is your next meeting?
I don't know that we scheduled the next one, hopefully. Honestly, I don't think we have one scheduled, so we definitely need to get that done.
Okay, all right. And you had mentioned getting some RFPs out. How are we doing on that?
Which one?
To firms, writing firms?
We haven't done an RFP process yet. We've just been working on finding out who actually does this. Some of the companies do it in conjunction with other things and it's. We're trying to find out if it's going to be a percentage fee or a flat fee. There's a lot of things to consider still.
Okay, great. I, it had just mentioned in there that you were going to be doing that. I just wondered how you, how you were getting along on that. Okay, all right, terrific. Police Community Engagement, I, I, instead of making this Police Citizen Academy. I just so, I tweaked the name a little bit. Councilmember Swagger, just because I was thinking, you know, that Coffee with the Cops that, that we did. You, you did a couple of years back, you know, was so successful that if we can ever get to meeting again. Maybe that's something we could also bring back. And so I kind of broadened the topic a little bit, so maybe we could put. You know, other things under there instead of just one thing. So that's why I changed that name. If you hate it, we can go back to it, but I just thought. We could add more to it.
We did, I was gonna say, Ryan and I did discuss during the Coffee with Cops, whenever it gets to the point where it hosted, then we would.
That was so successful. People really liked that. They enjoyed.
Yeah, it was great.
So I assume that you're heading this. What can, what, I didn't see, is there, was there a report? I didn't see a report.
We are actually meeting next Monday or Tuesday. Sorry, just talked with Ryan today, so we will have something by the next. Town meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right. Any questions? Councilmember Swagger? All right. Thank you. I have no special reports or correspondence. Town Manager's Report.
You've all received a copy of my report. The only thing I wanted to bring to your attention. Will be coming up in an upcoming agenda, will be taking action on the Pine Creek. Watershed Implementation Plan once final comments are into EPA and DEP. So we would be in the next few months, you'll see that on an agenda, but that's moving forward.
Were there any questions for Mr. Graham on his report? Town Attorney's Report.
Good evening, everybody. My report was attached in the shared drive. It is a confidential document. Happy to answer any questions. Directly, not here at the meeting, or an executive session to follow. And I think we are having an executive session. I'm not sure if we. Announced that yet to discuss property issues.
Right, we will discuss that, or I was going to announce that at the end when we were closing the meeting, so people would know, but thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Sorry to steal your thunder there.
We can say it many times. Okay, if there's nothing for the Town Attorney's Report, then under Old Business. Is there a motion to approve the checklist of bills?
Okay. Do you want me to read it?
Do you mind?
Okay, I moved to approve checklist thing number two dated February first, twenty twenty one. To February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one totaling one million seventy eight thousand, one hundred thirty dollars, twenty cents. This is submitted, as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Okay, Councilmember Swagger, I think, got in there. Were there any comments? Or questions about the checklist? We had opportunity to make comments and questions last meeting and I'm just giving you another chance. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting approving checklist number two indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? List approved. Under New Business, we have, oh, we have several things, but our first one is Sisters of Vine Providence. The first presentation and discussion. RJ, do you want to intro that?
Yeah, so I, I am just going to send a mic and camera request to the main person that I know is on the call. For this agenda item while he is connecting, I'll just give you a brief overview. Essentially, this is a project. Where the Sisters of Divine Providence are looking to add a new residential facility to their existing campus. This would essentially replace the function of the mother house currently. But that doesn't mean that that building would be going away. The assumption is that it would eventually be repurposed, although that use has not been determined yet. So this new residential facility, I believe, would house some of the sisters as well as potentially some residential care individuals. I'm sure that Mr. Ham, the project manager here, can, can elaborate if I, you know, missed anything there. But this has come through the Planning Commission. There are a handful of modification requests that were noted in the meeting memo. Following that Planning Commission meeting and I believe they're going to be outlining some of those as well as some sidewalk options for Babcock Boulevard. So, Mr. Ham, who else do I need to put on the call here?
Good evening, RJ. If you could also allow Jim Wanger, who's a principal for office. Access as well. I'll be doing the main presentation, but in case Jim has any comments or when there are questions, if there's anything that. He also adds, it'd be helpful for him to be able to respond.
All right, so you've got, you've got the ability to share your screen. Please do not touch the recording. Button in the top left corner, same drill as the Planning Commission, and I'll let you take it away.
Understood. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Tim Hap, Senior Project Manager with Dirk and Edson. We are a planning and design firm with our main office located in Lexington, Pennsylvania. As mentioned, Jim Wanger is with me tonight. He is a principal at Dirk and Edson. Our firm is presented to you tonight on behalf of the Sisters of Divine Providence. The sisters currently reside on. A fifty-one acre property called Providence Heights, located at nine thousand Babcock Boulevard in Allison Park. And the current application that we are presenting to you tonight is for preliminary final simple subdivision plan. As well as land development plan for a new residential facility. So tonight, I think the objective is for us to provide an initial overview of that proposed scope. And also to speak to the handful of modification requests that RJ had noted. As were the main agenda items, at least for our formal presentation. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So the first sign I'm going to discuss briefly is specifically the simple subdivision plan. As you can see, this is a graphic that highlights the proposed subdivision. The overall tract is the entire area that has color fill and the subdivision is for parcel two. Which is highlighted here in the back for orange. The existing campus overall is fifty-one point three two acres. And is currently zone institutional. The proposed parcel two, when it's subdivided, will be just over eight acres. And then the remaining parcel one, that's in yellow, that'll be forty-three point three acres. And the intent at this time, at least, is that both parcels would remain zone institutional. And although the sisters are proposing to subdivide it, at this time, there are no current plans or. Any intent for any development on parcel two. This is just, just to get it subdivided for future consideration. Before I pull off this graphic and move on to the land development aspect of the application, are there any questions on the subdivision part? And I can always sit at the end, if there are questions, I could always pull that graphic back up. Okay, next I want to highlight the application related to the land developments. The sisters are proposing a new residential and healthcare facility at the heart of their campus. So if all of you are familiar with the Sisters Campus and on this site plan, where my cursor is circling right now is the main mother house. That is visible up the hill from Babcock Boulevard. The area in the, behind it, just to the east, that is in the dark blue where my cursor is circling now. That is the proposed new residential facility. The overall square footage of the proposed building is just a little over sixty-eight thousand square feet. That'll entail three full stories above ground, again, with this, within this dark blue footprint. And then a partial basement level only on maybe half or so of the east wing over in this location here. Reason for that is with the proposed grade or elevations of the sites, most of the area that I'm circling here sits up higher. Than the topography as it falls off towards the woods to the east. So what will happen is when the proposed site is graded out and constructed, there will be a slope that transitions down from the parking area. And the main level of the building up here, down towards the woods, and that'll expose a lower level basement with an opportunity for an exit there. So that's, that's the reason for that partial basement area over there. As far as the total beds, we will end up with eighty-three new beds that are part of the project. That'll be a mix of fifty-nine independent living as well as twenty-four health cares, or twenty-four healthcare beds. The intent of those is to have some flexibility between assisted living as well as skilled nursing, depending on the needs of the sisters. As, as they continue to age and progress. This is, eighty-three total beds is actually a reduction from the one hundred beds that are currently online. Over in the mother house, St. Joseph's Center, and a few of the existing residential units behind the mother house. The intent at this point is to only maintain one of the three residential units that are behind the mother house here. That, that contains four beds. So in total, we'll end up with a reduction of thirteen online beds. For the sisters. They don't intend to reside in this duplex unit here. They intend to use that as a temporary housing option. For what was described to us as sisters in training as a, as a new basis. But all of the, the actual permanent residents that live in the facilities would be moving over to the proposed building. And just to give you a, just a glance or a kind of a bird's eye view of what the proposed building could look like. The top view is an area view, is if you're over Humberlands, looking back towards the site. So the brownish building in front is the existing Kern Spirituality Center with the proposed building in the background. And then the lower image is a graphic that shows the southeast quadrant of our proposed project with our rival parking courtyard. Our main entry is in showing the main building elevation. The proposed materials are, I need to be an asphalt shingle roof. We're going to have hardy board, fiber cement siding with some, with some stone, mainly factory stone veneer on the building. At this point, colors have not been finalized. This graphic was just illustrated to show the intent of the sisters, but it does give you an idea. As far as the overall architectural massing and style and forms of the building. This building will connect to Kern Spirituality Center on the ground floor only. There is going to be a connection and the building will be constructed right up against to it, but there are, other than the, the actual physical connection into Kern's. There are no other proposed improvements within Kern's Spirituality Center as part of this project. As far as other site improvements, this graphics does illustrate beyond the building, some of the site features that are proposed for the building. The main access up to the new residence will utilize the existing entrance and driveway off of Babcock Boulevard. That'll allow for a new driveway approach, again, up into the southeast corner of the building complex. Where we have a parking area mainly used for visitors as well as a wide and drop-off area to be able to utilize the main entrance. Beyond just that small parking area, we do have newly constructed parking areas here to the southwest. Of the proposed building, which will accommodate both staff and residents. And then also a newly reconfigured parking lot that's just west of the existing Kern Spirituality Center. We'll have a loading dock area that accesses the building in between the west wing of the new building and Kern's. This will be accessed by a driveway that will loop around existing Kettler Hall. As well as utilizing the service alley that already exists behind the mother house. So we'll make some small modifications here to allow the truck movements, to be able to make that access. Be able to get into the loading dock area as well as be able to exit campus along with the rest of the traffic back out into Babcock Boulevard. As part of other amenities on site, we're proposing a wellness garden for the residents in the southwest corner of the site. We do have a nice dining terrace area in between the, the east wing of the building and the chapel. And then there also is a number of walkways that connects not only to some of the other existing buildings on campus, but to some of the other amenities. And other natural areas on campus for. And then there also is a number of walkways that connects not only to some of the other existing buildings on campus, but to some of the other amenities and other natural areas on campus for use. Landscaping and sight lighting is proposed as part of the project and we are proposing public and sewer, I'm sorry, public sewer and water connections for the facility. We have been, and receipt of a letter from Gateway Engineers, the last review letter received for them was dated February 24th of this year. I don't know if you've all had a chance to review that, but essentially the letter is, it pretty much is. At this point, really only administrative comments. We've made substantial progress as far as addressing most of the design comments and documentation requirements since our first submission. So at this point, minus addressing any, any of those administrative items, then of course, I'm getting final approval. I believe we're in pretty good shape as, as part of the engineer review for the project. We're also currently working through our NPDS permit process. We've submitted the NPDS application. It's been deemed complete. So at this point, we are still awaiting technical comments to address if there are any. We've also submitted or working on coordinations and submitting our plans to the sewer authority for their design review. And we have also submitted to the water authority and are waiting for their review comments as well. Before I move on to specifically the modification requests, are there any questions about the overall? Elements or improvements that are proposed for the land development portion of the application? Okay, I'll move on. Again, if we get to the end, if I need to pull this graphic up, I would be happy to do so. So as part of our application, we are requesting a handful of modifications. So I will summarize those briefly. Just barely one second to pull up a graphic. The first one I'm going to cover is related to section 137. 1.09 related to preservable trees. And as part of our proposed improvements, the project is proposing to remove a total of 68 trees. As we've documented and reviewed based on our site visits, visits to campus and our documentation. We have noted that 43 of those 68 trees are trees that are over six inches that are alive and are deemed to be relatively good condition. 14 of those trees we determined are either dying or in poor condition over six inches. What this graphic is illustrating, you can see throughout our proposed improvements are the tree locations to be removed. We've overlaid then with the proposed improvements for the driveways and parking areas in gray. The building as proposed in blue. So you can see that, you know, a good number of those trees are impacted just in those improvements alone. The building, of course, being a multi-story building, there's no way that the trees could survive in those locations. And even the parking areas and the driveways, we are trying to make those work is feasible as possible within the core campus area that already exists with the existing buildings and other features. But even to construct those and maximize the amount of pavement needed to accommodate the parking and the driveway access. We are going to be demolishing a large majority of the existing parking spaces that are already there, having to adjust the grades and topographies. So even though that, that, you know, we do, it is, maybe it's going to be reconstructed over pavement that exists. Most of that will be changed elevations and essentially reconstructed where those trees can survive. The other parts that I've highlighting in yellow, while those don't have as many of those hardscape features on it. Those are areas that we're also proposing to change the grades or the elevations of the sites as part of the construction to accommodate some of the building and parking and other site features. So unfortunately, you know, because those trees are located within those areas to be grading and changing the great, the, the geography, it's just not possible to be able to save those trees. So as I mentioned during the planning commission meeting, you know, outside of those trees, you know, where it's possible, we're saving as many trees as we possibly can. We're actually proposing as part of this project, new trees, at least 65 new trees and actually relocating 15 existing trees that we think we could be able to move and save. And finding, finding new location for as part of this project. Before I move on to the next modification request, any questions on this one or the graphic that I'm showing at this point?
I had one, the size of the new trees you're planting, what would the, that be compared to the one you're cutting, your ones you're cutting down?
Well, they're going to definitely be smaller trees, but we are going to be meeting the ordinance requirement as far as proposed tree sizes at minimum. Part of what I think, you know, is from our standpoint is, you know, when you look at the campus as a whole, there is a substantial amount of trees that are on campus already being preserved as part of campus wooded areas that are going to remain. So where possible, we've maintained those along the edges, along the roads, in between the buildings. And as you'll see in some of the later graphics I'll show, even in the area where we've taken them down, we're also proposing between new trees, shrubs, ground cover, a substantial amount of landscape to take its place. Which we feel will certainly do a job and meet the ordinance intent as far as replanting in those areas where it's just not possible to save those existing trees.
I guess a second, or a second question is, is there any sustainability certifications that, that you're going to design to where the sisters are interested in doing that maybe would make the site? Better, even though trees might be coming off of it?
As far as I'm aware, and Jim can, can, can step in if there, if he has something else, but I, I'm not aware of any major sustainable. I mean, certainly some things that we're trying to achieve are, you know, number one, we've tried to minimize the amount of trees that we're taking down. Number two is as far as the minimizing pavement, one of the items that we're going to talk about here shortly is trying to minimize the amount of pavement that is built. Just so that as much as possible, we have more grass lawn landscape areas as far as pavement. So as much as possible to try to be sensitive to, to the environment, developing within the core campus area that's already been developed, already has utilities and other impervious areas. As opposed to encroaching into more of the wooded areas or undeveloped areas, all those are objectives and purposes behind how we developed the site and designed it. Hopefully that starts to address your, your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think I appreciate a much more thorough explanation about the removal of trees during this presentation than in planning commission. I thank you for that.
Sure. We move on to the next thing. The second modification we wanted to talk about was related to. Parking requirements. This is for section 13, 13.06 C3 that requires parking spaces, aisles and drives to be paved. I do have a graphic to pull up for this.
That was modification quest number three. I think we skipped two.
I may be going slightly out of the order that.
Okay.
If that's okay.
No problem, no problem. I just want to make sure you didn't miss it.
No, I didn't miss it. And I do promise the sidewalk is the grand finale at the end. Okay, so related to the parking, this is a graphic that also shows the proposed improvements on campus. And highlighting the yellow are again, the parking areas that are proposed and modified. As part of the project. Right now, within our project limit area, which is this black dash lines. There's 186 existing parking spaces and as part of the proposed improvements, when it's all done, within that same area, we'll end up with 188 spaces. When completed, we have estimated that, you know, on a normal daily operational use within the existing parking lot that the sisters have, probably only about half or maybe around 100 spaces or so are typically used. So there's a lot of those spaces that are not necessarily utilized. So what the sisters are requesting with this modification is for this area here that I'm circling, this shaded a little bit different yellow. Those are, that's an area where for 24 of the 188 parking spaces, the sisters are requesting for those to remain lawn and be able to be utilized as overflow parking when needed. Their hope is that, you know, number one, to not overbuild parking beyond what's needed for their operations. As I mentioned before, they really end up having a lot of extra spaces currently within their existing parking lot. So to not overbuild and more parking spaces that are needed, we're hoping that, you know, the proposed quantity as well as maintaining these mostly as lawns spaces would be. Agreeable for the town council to approve. They're also interested, as I mentioned before, is one of the issues to trying to not over pave and have impervious areas as much as possible. So again, to have 24 spaces that could be lawn as opposed to be asphalt paving when they're really hardly ever used if at all. Certainly would be an objective that they'd like to see be approved. And we also did want to note that from an overall stormwater design standpoint, we have designed the stormwater system. As far as the infrastructure, the rain gardens, everything is sized to account for if in the future it's deemed necessary to pave those 24 spaces. The stormwater system can handle it, the, all the stormwater calculations that were prepared for the project, everything is designed and sized accordingly to handle that in the future. If it ultimately needs to be paved. So we did want to note that as part of that, that in the future, if needed, that, that can be done, there will be no issues.
I have a question.
Councilmember.
Just in regard to parking, where does, where do the, the faculty and teachers and parents would need to be parked for the school? Is that affected at all with what's happening with the new residents here?
Not, not with this project. This is the, the La Roche University is actually a separate property to the south.
I mean, the Alpha School. I'm sorry. I should have been clear.
The Alpha School, yes, the, when, when, when I'm referencing the staff parking between either what we have within the proposed project or other parking that exists on campus that is unaffected by the projects, unaffected by the project scope. They would still be accommodated with those numbers.
Okay, and I guess this kind of is part of parking as well, another part of that question. You know, I know this is going to house the sisters and the retiring sisters, but I have, my understanding is that, that other private individuals will be able to also take residence here as well. Will that, as that ratio may or may not change in the future, will this parking be able to accommodate that as well?
It should. I think it is part of the parking analysis that we submitted with our application. We did run those numbers. And I believe that we had illustrated that that would be accommodated and would work for the new facility.
And yes, I'm sorry. You know, you did mention that you were moving from, I think, 100 beds to 83. How many currently are actual, are the residents? The Divine Providence Sisters and, and how many will be private residents and will they be like at the private pay or is this going to be? I'm just curious, you know, the future of this and how it's going to be, because I think it's, my understanding is that it's going to be more than. You know, retirement care for the sisters, that it's going to be open to others as well. And just curious of the ratios there and, and future of that.
I can say that right now, the sisters, if I remember correctly, their population in, as far as, you know, whether it's the actual sisters or other private residents that live on campus is currently 79. At least that's the last update that I had. So that when we talked about having 83 beds in the facility, that accommodates everybody as well as a few extra beds there. And certainly the intent is, you know, as the years do go on and the sister's population continues to decline. There, you know, they certainly are mindful of the fact that at some point, you know, that facility would be transitioned over to, you know, some other provider and then other residents would move in there. Honestly, the details of that have not been worked out. I don't know as, as far as the exact plan for how that's going to be handled, but certainly as part of the designing the facility, not only the building itself, but also any of the other surrounding facilities. Is designed with knowing that that's the future intent. And we believe it's been designed to accommodate that when that transition does occur later on.
I, I just recalled my, my aunt's retirement community. She was a Mother Superior and it was very different for them, many of the retirement and independent living that we're building in McCallis right now. Just curious. Thank you.
A question that I had for the parking. I know with the sisters moving out of the provincial house, that there was some talk of that building being used as office space for faculty at La Roche. And where there are faculty offices, of course, there are students that need to visit those, you know, faculty offices. So how, how has that been calculated in the parking?
So nothing has been determined or set in stone yet, but based on conversations between the sisters and the university. There has been a conversation about, yes, locating offices within those facilities, but not faculty offices. It would be more back of house administration departments that do not necessarily relate to the day-to-day academics with the students. They would be more maybe upper level administration or other support departments that don't require either classrooms or interactions with students. So therefore, that, that population of the campus would not necessarily be needing to be going back and forth between the buildings. The students would be staying on campus for those core facilities. Again, these would be more administrative offices that would not generate that type of traffic.
If there were, if there were 100 residences in the provincial house, and even if those were filled with just. Administration, has that, where is that calculation in with the parking?
Well, as far as the future parking, it's not part of this. The intent, and one of the things that we had also illustrated with part of our, our information is the ability to add parking later on if needed. Separate the project, because one of the things that, you know, we want to emphasize with this project, at least for this, the construction of this new facility is that. The population on the sister's property isn't going to change. All they're doing as part of this proposal is moving from existing buildings from one part of campus to the another, to another. The numbers don't change. However, you know, in the future, you know, if and when it's determined how some of the existing square footage that gets vacated is going to be filled. And honestly, you know, they're having the conversation, I don't know for sure, and since you don't know for sure what that's ultimately going to be, but whether it's the university or another user that comes in and either leases or buys the property. You know, there are areas of campus that can accommodate future parking related to that part of campus when it gets redeveloped, sold off. And then the intent, or at least the way that, you know, we would certainly like the project to be purchased at that time. Once those uses determine and it's better assessed as far as the parking that is required for that type of use that eventually moves in there. Then we can go back and take a look at the remaining parking that would be needed to be added and tied at, you know, with any occupancy for those, that part of the building when it gets redeveloped. But certainly, you know, behind the provincial house as well as areas out in front by reconfiguring and also doing some expansion. There is plenty of room to be able to add additional parking that would certainly meet, you know, any of those uses that would come into those areas that would be vacated when the sisters move into the new residence.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Woods.
And you said that. This expanded parking. You've already accounted for that in the stormwater management.
Not the expanded parking here. The, what I was referring to before was those 24 spaces and I'll pull it back up. The, basically anything that is shown in yellow for parking, all of that parking and anything that was already existing on campus in this graphic. Has been accommodated for stormwater in our design or already existed even before we are proposing to develop the, this project. These two areas that I'm showing here that we need dash line areas, that future parking, we would need to, as part of developing or reconfiguring those parking. Examine the stormwater related to those additional parking areas. That is not in our current storm design. That would have to be done as part of any of those future construction activities for that parking.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? On this modification? Next.
Okay, moving on. The next modification we are requesting is for section 913.14 C2C for stormwater management design standards. And I'm going to try to not overdo it as far as the explanation of this, so it's not want to overcomplicate it, but this is related to our proposed rain gardens. want to overcomplicate it, but this is related to our proposed rain gardens, which are our facilities to help to manage stormwater management. We do have two rain gardens as part of the project and a rain garden is essentially shaped and located low area on sites that is created to essentially handle and take in stormwater from the rest of the sites that gets directed to our rain gardens. And instead of it eventually being basically distributed out of our project sites, either downstream or to other facilities. The way the rain gardens work is, you know, based on the ordinance required storm events. They contain the stormwater that gets generated by that required storm event. And what it does is it holds it to a point that allows the water to infiltrate into the ground below. The way that the ordinance is written, our rain gardens, which we have two, again, one that is located here, which is directly to the east of the proposed building. And then we have a second one that's just to the south that is located here. It's a little bit to the east of the existing maintenance shed. Those two facilities are designed as rain gardens. And the way the ordinance is written, it's the ordinance basically says that for a particular one-year storm event that is supposed to take twenty-four hours for those basically those rain gardens or storm facilities to de-water or essentially have all the water disappear. For a traditional storm basin, that might mean for it to eventually drain out into a storm system that is outside of our property. With the rain gardens, that essentially means that the water that gets contained within the rain garden will eventually infiltrate and go below ground and stay within our project sites. The difference and the reason why we're asking for the modification is is that while the ordinance is is requiring it to take at minimum twenty-four hours for that de-watering to occur. The way that the underlying geology or the the ground conditions or the geology below the rain gardens, that infiltration is 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 occurring faster than what the ordinance is written for. For the north one, the way that the geology is established, it was tested and determined that it would be instead of twenty-four hours, it would be eighteen hours for this one to de-water. And then for the south rain garden, again, instead of being twenty-four hours, it would be fifteen hours with all that water to eventually infiltrate into the ground below. I will note that, you know, as part of the conversation with the planning commission and our coordination with Gateway Engineers, they have noted that they have zero concerns, you know, with that faster rate of infiltration. Frankly, it's it's a condition of the geology below. It's not something that is a design feature. We're essentially building this rain garden above the existing geology. We're not changing. That's just that's just the existing conditions that we're dealt with and working with.
You had also mentioned that this wouldn't have any effect on the creek, right?
For for this, the stormwater, I mean, again, for the intermittent stream that is located to the east, I mean, unless we have a much larger storm than what the ordinance even requires, you know, a more typical storm system that the ordinance is asking for will all be contained on site. It would infiltrate on the property and not have runoff beyond it. Now, I'm not, you know, a larger storm, you know, something that's more like a you know, five-year storm or ten-year storm, larger ones, you know, there may be runoff that does reach the intermittent stream and eventually gets down to Little Pine Creek further to the south. But for a more typical rainstorm, I used to seeing everything would be remaining on site and would infiltrate in those two rain garden facilities.
Any council member questions?
All right, hearing that.
Okay, moving on to the next one. This one is related to sections, basically landscape requirement sections. I won't even worry about the number at this point, but in case you're interested, it's sections thirteen, one, four point oh five B and C. These are landscape requirements for both the parking areas and the area around the building. And what this graphic here is illustrating is in the lighter green colors are all of the existing trees in wooded areas on the sisters' campus, not even the full campus, just a a partial view of campus with our proposed project area in the middle. The lighter green trees are all the trees and wooded areas that are going to remain as part of our project. Then the darker green areas more towards the center of the graphic is all of the proposed landscape that's part of the project. So as you're seeing, you know, in addition to what's remaining on, you know, on campus that's not to be touched, we are proposing a substantial amount of landscape that we believe does meet the intent of the ordinance for providing trees and landscape within the parking areas to provide shade, to provide aesthetic visual quality to the parking areas. I know probably more typically, you know, these are written for more parking areas that may be located closer to a primary road. As you can see in our situation, the majority of the parking areas are located substantially away from Cumberland, which is shown to the north. And Babcock is even further off. So these parking areas were a great distance away, hidden with topography, other buildings, and also with some of the existing trees to remain. So visually, even without having proposed landscape, they really wouldn't have much of an impact, but further adding and proposed new plantings certainly do meet the intent of the ordinance as far as that. And then as far as around the building itself, again, additional trees, shrubs, ground covers, you know, to help supplement not only just the building perimeter, but to enhance our proposed dining terrace area, our wellness garden space and really to create, you know, really nice entry areas into the building. We have utilized a lot of landscape there that again, I believe certainly meets the intent of the ordinance as far as those materials. Part of what the sisters were hoping and asking for the council to approve this modification for is to number one, not necessarily overplant the parking areas and the building perimeter beyond what is really necessary to achieve the aesthetics and the substantial planting that the ordinance is asking for. Number one, from a security standpoint, in some cases, as well documented that it can be a safety concern if there's too much planting, too many trees that can create little pockets where potential trespassers or other dangerous activities could occur. So from a sense of safety and security, the sisters are trying not to overplant and allow those opportunities. And also from an operational standpoint, you know, especially within the parking lots, not over landscaping so that there are areas for snow removal and also allowing sightlines for security cameras and other security measures, just to make sure that, you know, as a campus community, they do have confidence, it feels safe walking around and moving throughout their campus between the different buildings. So again, between the planting that is proposed and then the landscape that already exists that's going to be maintained, there is a substantial amount of plant material that will remain or be added to the project that is certainly be visually, you know, pleasing, you know, and also meet the intent of the ordinance as far as those areas of the proposed improvements.
Any questions from council?
Madam President.
Councilmember Woods.
I just wanted to point out to council that the large green area in the top right of their map there, where there's a lot of existing trees, is also the same spot where they're looking to subdivide. So there's no guarantee that that's going to remain a treed area. And I just wonder if there's some opportunity to plant in other places on the property in lieu of, you know, overcrowding the parking areas.
Is that a question for me? I just want to make sure that you're asking me that or as.
I'm just trying to put the suggestion out there that maybe that's a possibility if you're asking for this modification that maybe it can be made up somewhere else.
It's it's certainly a possibility. I I guess it just comes down to how much additional value a few more trees is going to add. I mean, when we look at buffering, parking the landscape in around the building, I would say that we've certainly, you know, planted in areas where it's most opportunistic for the amenities and the facilities that we have. We are also dealing with some areas of the site that are rather steep, you know, with topography that in some cases, cases does limit us around the building, but it really just kind of comes down to how much additional material, you know, you feel is justified beyond what we're showing here to meet that need.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam President.
Yes.
Tim, what specifically you're asking for? Not islands or run that by me, give me the.
We're essentially asking for the quantity of materials that we've included in the proposed plans to be approved as is, which is a little bit less than in some cases than what the ordinance is requiring. What we're showing or what we're trying to illustrate here is that, you know, minus the actual numbers themselves, the ordinance, you know, typically is looking for the parking areas to have trees to be able to have shade within it within the islands to have either shrubs or ground covers so that they're not just like bears, so they look more attractive. And then around the building, the ordinance is asking for a certain amount of plant material for trees and shrubs to be able to make sure that the building itself is landscaped. I know that, you know, having done a lot of plan review in my early years of my career, I know that a lot of municipalities write these sections to really as a safeguard to make sure that the applicant for whatever type of project, is it going to just leave the site either unplanted or a bare minimum only? And I think that what these graphics, you know, certainly illustrate is the intent by the sisters is to in the areas that I showed before, we needed to clear, they have certainly replanted as far as, you know, large number of trees with these large circles. And then all of these colored green areas around the building, that's all proposed new planting. So certainly a substantial amount of new shrubs, ground covers, it really is going to create some nice amenities. So we've essentially pushed some of that landscaping out of the parking areas into some of these other amenities that may have not been required to be covered, but what we were getting at before, to be able to create a little bit more openness to allow those room for snow removal, we've adjusted and added them in other areas of our site.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, and I'll move on to our last one, which is related to sidewalks, section thirteen, one, three point one seven. I guess one item just to note, we did, this was part of our review with Gateway and part of the conversation with planning commission is we have noted for the simple subdivision for lot two, the that we've noted that at the time that that parcel gets developed in the future, we would then be asking to be allowed to construct a sidewalk along that parcel at that time. But as far as this project related to remaining lot one, we had initially asked for a modification from the sidewalk requirements. And certainly as part of the results of the most recent planning commission, we understood that there was certainly a desire to have a sidewalk along the Babcock Boulevard frontage. So since that planning commission meeting, our design team has taken a look at three different alignments and I'll share each of them, you know, briefly. There is one that I will tell you that is much more preferred, but let me just run through the couple of other ones first here. To orient you, I did rotate the graphic a little bit. So on the bottom here, this road here is Babcock Boulevard. And then this road that is running on the left side of the page, north, we're not north, south, but up and down here, that's Cumberland. Cumberland Road. So our proposed project would be off the page up to the top of the page here. What this graphic is showing is one preliminary scheme for the sidewalk along Babcock. This is a less preferred option from our team and for the sisters. It essentially starts the existing walkway at the entrance to the sisters. There is an existing concrete paving area that's there now that is a landing for an existing crosswalk from the La Roche sidewalk across the driveway. And you would essentially tie into that existing concrete area. This scheme pulls the sidewalk back behind the right-of-way line on Babcock and it wraps it around the lake or the pond at the bottom of the sister's property. The idea of this is that instead of running along the road, coming into the sister's campus and having a walkway interior to the property, not necessarily directly adjacent to, but with views of the water would be a more pleasant walking experience. But our team has looked at this in terms of that, you know, thinking that the intent for that sidewalk along Babcock is really to get from, you know, well called, you know, this area here at the driveway over to the intersection of Cumberland and Babcock. It really is out of the way and is a less preferred option as far as our review. A second scheme that we've looked at is to add a sidewalk right along the edge of the road on Babcock Boulevard. This would be a concept that's similar to what La Roche University constructed. What we started to highlight with all these different notes is just a number of issues and challenges with constructing that walkway directly adjacent to the shoulder of the road. Part of that is related to existing utility poles, traffic signals, sewer infrastructure, there's just a number of impediments along that route. Never mind this clouded area here in red, there's already a very steep slope that is falling off of the edge of the road. It would make it rather challenging for that walkway to be constructed in that area right off the road here. So from just a an alignment experience standpoint along the road may not be as desirable for the pedestrian being directly on the road and against, you know, the the large white traffic that is going along Babcock. But also dealing with the existing infrastructure, with the poles, gas meters, sanitary, you know, all the other infrastructure that's along the road, certainly a very challenging scheme to be able to implement for the sidewalk. The alignment that we do prefer is an alignment that still tries to stay relatively close to the road, but pulls the sidewalk behind the right-of-way into the sister's property for some lengths. It does get, you know, near the lake behind the actual road, but we do create a little bit more of a nicer walk with views of the water, but it's pulled away from the road edge. We do have to perform some grading. We are going to lose a few trees to be able to make the slopes work from our existing concrete landing area here to be able to slope down and be able to route the walkway. We are meandering or having, you know, curves and turns in the walkway, not only to make it a little bit more of a nicer walk, more park-like, but also to try to maintain as many of the existing trees as possible as well as to not impact either either existing infrastructure like the meters and poles or existing signage. We will have to do some grading, so we probably will remove a few trees as related to or some smaller shrubs, but any of the largest substantial trees, we're doing everything we possibly can to be able to make that wall connection work. I will note that this alignment as currently shown is not fully ADA accessible, at least as far as the covered walkway. With the grades of Babcock Boulevard as they are in the existing site, it is rather challenging to be able to to make the grades work without being impactful as far as the amount of earthwork that's required as well as impacting the existing trees, which we're certainly trying to minimize as much as possible. Plus, we're also trying to keep a more direct path between the Cumberland intersection over to where we'd be tying into over by the sister's entrance. So the meander in the walkway, dealing with the grades and trying not to impact the existing conditions. That's what's what's essentially causing that condition. The purple dash line does show, at least over on the Cumberland side, if we were required to provide ADA accessible connection here. That's essentially the routes that would be required. It certainly adds length. And with that, there would be additional grading and probably treatment would make it happen, but I think the way that, you know, one of the things that we would want to point out is that even if you're able to make this accessible, some of the area other connections may not be fully accessible anyway. So at minimum, I I do think that having it be at least barrier free, which means that there's no steps, it's a little bit steeper than will be required by ADA code to be fully accessible, but there's no steps or other impediments that wouldn't allow someone to traverse it. It's just a little steeper than the code suggests. So as noted, this is indeed, you know, our preferred scheme. And certainly the the walkway that is on the other side of the road over by the church is a precedent example for having that walkway off of the road edge. That one is separated and does have a little bit of curve and meandering and has that separation from the roadway, which as noted before, I think from the pedestrian experience, is certainly more pleasurable than walking directly against the road and having traffic be present by you. So I think this is a a better option, not only for the sisters, as far as what they'd like to see as part of their campus development, but certainly for the town as well. but certainly for the town as well.
Are there any questions about this sidewalk?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
So for this, for this sidewalk configuration that we're looking at now, the, the only ADA compliance issue is that left-hand side where there's the difference between the the color sidewalk and the blue and the purple, I'm colorblind, I can't tell what color that is.
Yeah, on, on the right-hand side over by the driveway, the way that is shown in this sketch, it's also steeper. We also, we have looked at it on another sketch that I don't, I don't have shown here at the moment. We can pull these grades out a little bit further to make that slope a little bit more gentle if required to be ADA accessible. So I would say it is feasible, but it certainly is a little bit more challenging from a construction standpoint based on, you know, the fact that we're trying to save as many trees as possible. We're trying to not encroach, you know, right up against the water's edge. And, you know, all these dash lines that I'm hovering over my cursor, that's topography or slope that's falling down from the road towards the water. So we're really trying to thread a needle through that, create a nice walking experience. And it just creates certainly a challenge to be able to make it flat as possible. You know, essentially it's, you know, we're dealing with, you know, the ground as, as it is and just trying to make it work as best as we possibly can.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I bring that up because, you know, across the street on the other side is UPMC. So you may have people who would be, you know, traveling this route that, that may need the ADA compliance a little bit more than you might in other areas. And then my other question may be more for RJ or Steve, I don't know. If the sidewalk is not within the town's right of way, is there anything special we have to do?
Yeah, I can, I can fill this one. So by default sidewalks are expected to be constructed in the right of way, but council is able to approve an alternate sidewalk design outside of the right of way through the modification process.
Yeah, no, I get that part. My, my question is more for, you know, lack of a better term, protect ourselves going forward.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying, yeah. So I, I, what I would recommend is either in the developer's agreement or a note on the plans or, you know, both. I would probably speak to the town engineer about this as well to see, you know, what, what his advice would be for how to most commonly note it, that there needs to be perpetual public access, basically, even though this is outside of the right of way, that essentially there's, there's a pedestrian access easement, almost if you will, that these are essentially considered public sidewalks, even though they're on private property.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wondering, so whatever we would do. Okay, okay, thank you.
Other, other comments or questions about the sidewalk?
I have a quick question.
Councilmember Clinton?
This, I guess, is for RJ as well. Regarding the ADA, is that a part of our requirement in the town? Would that need another, a separate exemption?
Um, so it's, it's not explicitly stated in our code that everything has to be ADA accessible to my knowledge. It does mention that if the sidewalk is to be built along a county or state road, then their stipulations can apply. I'm not personally extremely familiar with those, but, you know, they, they, they will be working off of the state route here.
Just to be aware, I mean, I, even related to, you know, even if it was in the right of way, I mean, there are, just understand, there are some roads that do have sidewalks that are just not accessible. Because in some cases, especially if the road's not accessible, you can't build a sidewalk right next to it that is going to be accessible when the road is not. There's just no way to construct that and make that work. You know, we turn that as, you know, cheese and grain, and there's just no way to be able to make adjustments that's feasible to allow that to happen. So in this case, you know, especially as we're approaching Cumberland's intersection, as you can see in my screen, you know, along that road, there's a lot of those lines or, or topography lines are hitting there, and that's showing it's very steep. So even if in this area that we built it along the road, there's no way that that would be fully ADA accessible, that would be barrier free also. So all we're doing, even though it's not against the road, we're essentially providing that same condition that would be against the road. We're only pushing a little bit further back from the road.
So if you look at, oh, by the way, I do like the, the version that you're recommending as opposed to the one that goes all up in the property and the one that's just smack dab against the road. So I, I do agree with you, I like this one better. But when I'm looking at this ADA, the accessibility here, and we haven't gotten to this yet, but putting a sidewalk along Cumberland, you could just straighten that little end up and sweep it. It would be even shorter to take it up to Cumberland, not to the corner, but it would, it could go up to the sidewalk that I would like for you to put in on Cumberland. And do you see what I'm talking about?
Well, I, I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, the Cumberland, I mean, I guess.
Do, do you see what I was saying, though, about you could, instead of taking that purple one way down and around and making a big kind of arch, you could just swing it out and connect it to a Cumberland sidewalk that would go up and down Cumberland, and then you would still have the ADA accessibility.
I think it depends somewhat on the path of travel that we're, you're thinking about. Because if someone is walking along Cumberland, that may be useful to them. But if someone is walking primarily what would be north, south, even though it's rotated this page, but this direction, one of the, one of the, either the concerns or one of the, the points that's less desirable about this in, in making it accessible would be having to add length to the walk and finding the area to basically protrude into the site to accommodate that. This essentially adds length. And, you know, whether or not that's going to deter a pedestrian from using it, once they realize that, well, now I gotta go essentially out, you know, and out of my way, even though I want to go this way, now you want me to go the other direction. It, I think it's just a question of whether it's necessary and for the user, whether, you know, those accommodations are helpful or whether they're adding length to the, to the walk or the route that they may not like or want and they find as efficient either by using other walkways or other means to get to it. It's, it's just part of the decision aspect of trying to figure out what is the best alignment and what are the, what are the needs that we're trying to accommodate.
Other council member comments?
Quick.
Councilmember Smith?
Just on that point, I, I just, I don't know if I've ever seen it with sidewalks, but I've certainly seen it on buildings that have gone ADA compliant, you know, where you have the stairs up to the door, but then you also have a ramp. Has, is something similar possible for sidewalks? Where you have a straight sidewalk as well as an ADA compliant, you know, kind of ramp? So instead of an either or, it's a both, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I, I think having, especially if it's really only for a walkway. I mean, usually what you see is, is in that case is you have stairs leading up to a doorway for a building and you have the ramp because obviously the stairs create that barrier to get in there. My, my, my take on that is having a walkway that's steeper and then another ramp really is essentially building two of the same elements and is probably not efficient as far as cost. And you'd rather just build, you know, one, you know, elements that meets most or all the needs of possible and not build necessarily both of them. And I, I'm not sure it helps to build both of those in this case.
I mean, I, I think it would definitely help. You know, again, the ADA compliance issue to me is, is kind of important in this area. So I mean, I, I think it would help, you know, how, how much on the margin it helps, I guess, could be the issue, but I definitely think it would help.
Yeah, because part of it too is, you know, as I mentioned before, you know, we're already going to be impacting the site to some degree with the grading, the construction of it. You know, we're trying to minimize the trees, but if you do that, and then in addition to that, you actually create more earthwork, more construction activity, you know, you're likely going to be impacting your site even more with the trees. So trying to balancing, you know, what's, what's best as far as the proposed improvements versus what you're trying to preserve and maintain. Again, I, I think that just goes back to, you know, what are the, the primary objectives that you're trying to achieve with the concept and with the alignment? Certainly, I believe the sisters would, would try to minimize the impact, you know, what's necessary to be able to maintain as many of those trees and to limit the earthwork and disturbance to the existing conditions as possible.
So this is technically part of our sidewalk district. I meant no, a lot of the newer members may not be aware of that. And that's a part of the town where we've kind of started our sidewalks, put a lot of our sidewalk grant money toward and kind of flaring, kind of coming out from there. And so this is, you know, part of this district. And I, I, I feel like it is a standard for, to have ADA accessibility. You're building a facility there for aging and retiring individuals. You have a hospital there on the other side. I, I think we do need, I, I think it needs to be ADA accessible, however you choose to do that the best way. But I, I, I do think we need that.
And it, and it is something that we can study for, I mean, as I said, you know, originally at the beginning of this part of the conversation, this is a preliminary sketch, just to kind of, you know, relay the concept for it. We can certainly take a closer look as far as what that, you know, more detailed alignment and what the impacts are to accommodate that. Certainly report back to council as far as those were detailed findings.
Great. So I had asked in planning for you to bring some sketches for council to look at Cumberland. The planning commission was like, well, it looks like kind of the pipeline is kind of up there on Cumberland. And so we don't really know where it is, and we can't really tell about the easement. And so they just kind of said, you know what, you, we're not saying that you need to put sidewalks there. So I, I looked at, there's so much going on in those easements that I honestly, I just couldn't even tell where the pipeline was and if a sidewalk could even fit in there. And as we know, or maybe everyone doesn't know, that you, you cannot pave over the Buckeye Pipeline, right? RJ, isn't that true? That's like a rule?
Yeah, that, that seems to be the lore of the town in my time here.
Well, well, wait, wait, wait now, lore is not rule, lore is not law, lore is not code. So that's what I've always been told, but I've been told a lot of things that we're finding out aren't exactly right. So is that true or is that not true?
It would be up to the easement owner. I have not personally been in contact with anyone who has control of that easement to personally have that conversation. However, I've probably heard the same things that you have, that that is not something they've ever been inclined to grant permission of. I would have to do further research to confirm.
Okay. So as you can see by looking at this, who, who can tell? Is there, is there room for a sidewalk there that is not on top of? And of course, the reason is if they need to make repairs or whatever, they don't want to pay to replace the sidewalk that they tear up because sidewalks are expensive. So is there room there for, I see, it looks like the pipeline, at least a part of the way, isn't even on that side of the road. Am I right about that or?
Yes, so, so part of the pipeline, so it's part of the pipeline easement does encroach onto the south side of Cumberland. So obviously the orange is coloring, you know, the easement extent. And then it is my cursor, if you can see it here, is following the edge of the road along south side of Cumberland there. So it definitely does reach into the sister's property for a certain length as far as where that extent of the easement is, at least, you know, along that stretch of the roadway there. That along with other existing vegetation that is along the road, that's part of the existing buffer.
So can a sidewalk fit there?
We have not sketched out a walkway there yet. If that's something that the council is asking us to examine, we can take a look and see what the feasibility of that is. I, I will tell you that from a grading and connection standpoint, likely the further west, I'm sorry, east we go, the more challenging that gets related to topography and also even from a connectivity standpoint. This area here is that lot two, which is not developed currently. We don't know if and when that will be developed. So to create a sidewalk and, and construct one along here, I'm not sure at this time what exactly we'd be connecting to. And then going back to the original discussion point, if that also becomes an imped, you know, impediment there, you know, I, I don't know the logistics of that offhand, whether that makes that, and whether that merits, you know, extending that sidewalk or adding a sidewalk along here, if all it's going to do is be able to essentially get to this point and terminate. So if, if you're asking us as far as, you know, the sisters to have us examine a alignment report back, you can take a look at that. But I can't answer that question tonight without taking a closer look at, at that in more detail.
I would be interested in knowing that.
And a quick.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, so, so going further east there, that's the proposed parcel that's being split off, correct?
Essentially, yes. And I could pull it up again to illustrate it if, if helpful, but right. Essentially, this is where the wooded area starts in the back of the sister's property. And that is a substantial area within that lot two that is, that would be subdivided off, that's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, so if that ever ends up getting developed in the future, you know, I mean, for now, that sidewalk might not connect to anything, but if that lot gets developed in the future at all, then there is something that, that would be there to connect to, whereas if we don't do it now, when they develop their lot, they're going to say, well, there's nowhere for the sidewalk to connect to. You know, so it's, it's kind of a, one of them has to come first or else neither one will get done.
Right, exactly.
Right, and, and what we don't know is what restrictions exactly this is going to entail. So we'd have to look and see, you know, what the options are for alignments, you know, whether that, you know, does go through there or whether there's another liner for that. We'd have to take a closer look and see what, what could work and, you know, as we did with the options along Babcock. Frankly, what are the obstructions or obstacles to make it, make that connection challenging?
Is that something that council would be interested in seeing? I can't see all of you because of the, I say, I, I see Councilmember Clinton. Okay, Smith, let me, hold on, let me look down here. Okay, Spahn, okay, I got thumbs up from everybody. So yeah, I think we are unanimously interested in seeing what can be done there. And we just need to get all the facts about can we encroach on a part of the easement or any of the easement? Or is there a type of sidewalk that can go there that maybe they are amenable to or one that isn't? Just all that information would be, would be good to know. This is right in the middle of our sidewalk district and all those young people at La Roche, they're all, they're walking everywhere. And I think it's, there's a lot of value there. So I, I appreciate you doing that, thank you.
Quick, another quick question, this is probably more for RJ or for anyone else who might know. Is that easement actually being used, do we know? I mean, is there a pipeline there?
I, I am fairly sure that there is indeed a pipeline in there. Again, not a question anyone has ever directly asked me.
There, there is, so yeah, it goes all the way down Cumberland, all the way down to the schools up the other side. There are yellow things that go up that say the pipelines here.
Okay, they have the, the stakes, so it's, it's like a transmission line.
It's an active transmission line.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's a thing. Any other questions about the sidewalk?
Oh, I, wait, one, one last question on the sidewalk. Just because from memory, I can't remember, on the other side of Cumberland, is there a sidewalk, you know, up past where the, where the pipeline crosses under Cumberland? I just can't remember if there's a sidewalk next to the parking lot there or not.
UPMC does have a sidewalk along the frontage. I guess that would be the north side of Cumberland where they do have sidewalk along that frontage. It's not, I don't think it's necessarily against the road, but they do have it along that frontage. they do have it along that frontage because as of right now, they don't have it on the, what would be the eastern side of Babcock, but their south side of the property, they do have a walkway there.
Okay, there's probably not a good place to put a crosswalk up there though, is there? Past the corner. That's.
Again, that's something that'd have to be taken a closer look at, both as far as, you know, where that location would be and, you know, depending on, you know, the road and all that stuff. I think there's a lot of parameters have to be taken a look at to see whether a crosswalk makes sense at that location.
Yeah.
Where, where are you talking about a crosswalk?
Well, I mean, just off the top of my head, I was thinking of a sidewalk that, that went on the south side of Cumberland Road there. Yeah. Right up, right up until the pipeline crosses back over and then have a crosswalk there.
Mid.
If there's a sidewalk on the other side.
Mid-block crosswalks are incredibly dangerous and
Yeah, that's.
and nobody will approve that. Nobody will.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Um, are there, if there are no, is that's the end of your modifications, I think?
It is. And that is the end of my, my formal presentation. So unless there's any other questions, that's all we had for this evening.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. We look forward to coming back with those. RJ?
Yes, just, just before he heads us green, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page for the deliverables next time they come back to council. So you're looking at a feasibility assessment for the Cumberland sidewalk potentially, some research on the Buckeye Pipeline easement and their position on sidewalks. And potentially are we satisfied with the Babcock Boulevard sidewalk information or was anyone looking for anything further?
Um, we need that, we need an ADA plan.
Okay. So, so the plan moving forward for the Babcock Boulevard sidewalk needs to be ADA compliant.
Yeah, I, I think it, I think that's a standard. I really think we need that. Yes.
Okay.
Council, council members, is there an odd on the ADA or no? Yes or no for the ADA?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to the dialysis clinic. We have, RJ, I'll just let you do this.
Yes, I, I've, I've got Kaylee coming on. We had all of our camera squares shuffling around as folks were hopping offline. So if I sent a mute, an unmute request to the wrong person because your square moved, please ignore. Um, Kaylee, who else did you want me to have on camera and mic?
Um, I think the only other person here with me today is Patty Gauntner. She's with DCI. So she's available.
So.
Patty, I, I will send you a mic and camera request, just as an FYI, if you mute yourself, you need to either send me a chat message or signal somehow to Kaylee that you would like to be unmuted again, or you can just stay muted if you don't have anything specific for the presentation right now. So.
RJ, it's, are we doing a presentation this evening? I thought we did a presentation.
Or excuse me, I apologize. They, I didn't know if there was anything further they needed to add.
I, I was going to see if there were any questions from council.
Oh, okay. Well, then never mind.
I mean, I mean, is there something else? Because I, I mean, I thought we'd already made this discussion and now we were moving to motions. Am I, am I rushing this? Am I doing this?
No, no, the, the only thing that I have to say that's changed since last time is we have an updated engineer's review letter that sort of addresses the majority of the technical comments that were remaining from the last presentation, as well as the staff report that lists the modifications that would be considered with approval. So that's all that I have to add. If, if you're ready to move on to the question portion.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we won't take up anyone's time more than we have to, but we are happy to go over anything that we talked about. I don't know if all the council members were here when we were here a month ago. But if anyone needs me to go over any part of the plan, I'd be happy to.
Councilmember Spahn?
This is, actually, I think you did a great job going over the plans at the last meeting. And this is just a minor detail, but I'd like to hear it spoken out loud that I believe that you did agree or are making arrangements to get it agreed to, to make sure that our sidewalks connect with Howard, by Howard Hannah.
Yeah, DC, DCI work with Howard Hannah to make that connection possible. That certainly won't, they won't let that hold this up at all.
Great. That wasn't mentioned in the documents that I received. I just wanted to make sure. I thought you were going to do it. Thank you.
As you heard, we're all about sidewalks. Are there any questions? The first motion here is to consolidate the lots. I think there were, were there three lots, right, RJ, three lots?
Yes.
Okay. So first of all, we have to vote to consolidate those lots and then we would have to, and then the next thing would be to approve the land development. So the first motion, and does anyone have any question about the consolidation of those three lots? Okay. All right. If there aren't any questions at all, is there a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Woods.
I move to approve the lot consolidation application known as the Dialysis Clinic Incorporated Dixon Lot Consolidation as reviewed by the town engineer in the review letter dated March 19th, 2021.
All right. All right. I think Councilmember Smith got in there. Um, all right. I give you a second chance. Any questions, concerns about this consolidation? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Um, and the next motion is to approve the land development. Are there any questions about that plan? Any concerns? I, I thought your presentation was quite, quite good. I thought you really went over things and took a lot of questions then. So, okay. Is there a motion to approve this plan? Councilmember Spahn?
I move to approve the preliminary final land development application submitted by Dialysis Clinic, Inc. Located at eight four four three Perry Highway, lot and block six one one dash C dash one nine nine comma seven one four dash R dash two nine seven and seven one four dash R dash three one nine contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in the planning and development staff report and the town engineer's review letter, both dated March 19th, 2021. Plan approval includes approval of modification requests one through three as identified in the attached staff report.
Second.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Swager. Again, any, any questions or concerns about any of these? All right. Hearing that, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Um, we have, C is about the grant submission for resolution on Walpark. Bob, do you want to take this?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. We have prepared a resolution to submit a grant application to DCNR for work on the Walpark Trail. Part of what we've done preliminarily is to try to get a, an idea of what the overall cost is going to be for our planning purposes in part, but just so that we all knew what to expect down the road. And, you know, the estimates are much higher than what we would have expected. They are based on a design similar to what you see in other parts of the Rachel Carson Trail. So it's a crushed limestone and areas that would be subject to flooding have some more permanent material like concrete there. All that being said, my recommendation would be that we would move forward with the engineering and overall planning of the trail at this point. So we would be expending, the, the total project would be about $75,000. It would be split evenly between DCNR and the town. And then assuming that we get that grant, we do that work, then we can be looking in advance at trying to find various sources of funding and some additional planning for in-kind services versus grants versus identifying foundations that we may be able to get money from. So again, my, my recommendation would be that this grant submission be solely for the engineering and planning of the, the trail at this point, and that we don't consider any part of construction.
Any questions by or comments from council members? Uh, yes.
Bob, it's 75,000 for the, just the design of it?
It would be, yes, it would be. A lot of that has to do with a, some stormwater issues that occur throughout the, that hillside. So they have to be addressed as a design is prepared.
It's a lot of engineering costs to councilment terror. There's a lot of engineers are expensive. Councilmember Spahn?
Yeah, I'm, I just want to speak to this because this is really something that came, is coming out of the EAC. It is, there was the same, well, there was a grant and a different amount of money. Bob, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here. But I think it was a lower amount for engineering and planning that was that we submitted last year and the council approved that. We did not get approved for that particular grant. And this is a 50% matching type grant. So the only, so the question I, so I, I am totally not in favor of, at least at this juncture of thinking that we absolutely, that that estimate is realistic or what we should spend on this Walpark Trail. Should we ever, you know, agree to, you know, to build it? But I do think that we have a strong interest in understanding our green space, what we can do with it. This is an obvious use for Walpark, although it is my opinion that, as Bob said, this, this estimate was for kind of the Cadillac of, of, of trails. I don't know that anyone ever suggested or that we, that we had to put a trail. It could be a nature trail instead of a Rachel Carson type of trail. Um, maybe ultimately we won't want to put a trail in there when we find out how much it's going, consider how much it's going to cost. So I, I support what Bob is saying. I'm, I'm very much in favor of moving ahead to look at alternatives to do the, to do engineering work. But my question to you, Bob, is that, you know, the engineering of $75,000 in that estimate was the engineering to do that project. Do we really need to, well, no, I mean, I apologize. Let me ask a, a free question. If we applied for the $75,000 grant that we would have to match half of, we don't get paid the grant money until we actually spend the money, correct?
Cool. Yeah, it is reimbursed. You're correct.
It's reimbursed. So in essence, because I'm just going to say, I for one, am in favor of not spending, not doing that level of engineering work because I think that's a lot of money. I think we can do something for less. But I guess in Bob's recommendation, I would say I'd be fine with the 75. But that I think that we should agree that we are not necessarily going to spend it because we only will seek reimbursement for what we actually do spend. If that makes sense, I apologize if it was circular, but we've been going through this all day and it was, we only got the, and I apologize to council, we, we only got that estimate late last week. So it wasn't like we had a whole bunch of time and there is a time constraint in that this application has to be approved by council quickly because the application.
Could I make a suggestion then based on what you're saying, Shelley? If we approve this resolution, the resolution doesn't include a dollar figure. The dollar figures will be attached to the application itself. The direction that we would receive from council tonight, over and above the approval of the resolution, could we say in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for engineering and I'll work with Gateway to bring that cost down before we even make the application?
I mean, I'm satisfied with that, but then I, so long as, you know, we know that we're already collaborating on this with the EAC and others. So there's I'd say there's sufficient oversight. And by the, just by the way, for everyone's information, this is time is of the essence because we will miss the opportunity to apply for this grant if we don't have it in by the 14th of April. So.
If we're not, if we're not confident that we want to build this trail, do we want to spend the 32,000 of our own dollars to do, to get an engineering report that we don't, not even sure we want to use?
Last year, this council said they wanted to build this trail. I, I'm making a different, I, I don't support building the trail that with the cost estimate of three quarters of a million dollars. But, but I'm, I'm speaking for myself and the EAC. We're very interested in pursuing what might be a much, a much more rustic trail to better utilize this green asset that the town has that's not being utilized at all. I mean, is that part of it?
Of course, a lot of things have changed in that year.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there have been, Councilmember Smith?
So, so this grant is this a, I mean, is this a grant that if we didn't apply for it this year, we could apply for it next year or the year after, you know, with the same likelihood of, of getting it?
Um, this is one of the hardest grants, most competitive grant, I'll say, that the state offers. The rounds of funding are annual. So in answer to your question, there, you know, I would anticipate that there would be rounds of funding moving forward each year. What I can't tell you is how much money will be available. My guess is that as a result of the pandemic, there will be less and less funding available over the next few years, thus more competitive situation. But it's certainly something that can be applied for at a future date.
And you don't have to, to spend whatever amount is approved in order to get reimbursement for 50%. So if it's a, if it's approved up to 75,000, just to take the number that's there. If you spend 20,000, you can put in for reimbursement for 10.
Yes.
You don't have to go up to 75 before.
No, if, if the, the scope of the project ended up being $30,000, you know, we would bill or we would seek reimbursement for 15. So.
Are there any, oh, Councilmember Woods?
Yeah, I just, is there another opportunity for us to put the brakes on this? For instance, if we say, yes, let's apply For instance, if we say, yes, let's apply for the grants now and you talk to Gateway and find out that even if we don't go with the Cadillac trails and we do something more rustic, the engineering is still going to cost upwards of sixty thousand dollars. Can we still stop there?
We can, yeah, I can certainly keep you informed through the weekly updates and, you know, receive direction from you in that regard. My, my suggestion would be that we, if, if we're not going to consider, let's say, we're successful. If we would not accept the application, that would, in my mind, be a worst case scenario because we would be seen as not working with DCNR and then not getting, it'll lose some credibility for future applications. So I would rather not apply at all than apply and turn it down. I guess we're a long way around making that point.
Bob, how long do we have to spend? Should we get awarded a grant? How long do we have to spend it?
Normally, there's a, a twenty-four month window. Sometimes it goes up to thirty-six, but normally it's a twenty-four month window.
I think that's pertinent. We could spend nothing this year.
Yeah, I guarantee you, we, we won't spend anything this year. We won't, we won't hear about this grant until probably November, October, November.
And then it would be like twenty-four months from that point?
Correct. From the date of the, the grant contract being signed.
So we have to decide tonight about if we're going to apply for this or not because the deadline's the twelfth, I think we said the twelfth?
Well, the, the deadline's actually the fourteenth. We have a meeting on the twelfth.
Oh, okay.
We just didn't want to come up against that deadline if we didn't have to.
Okay.
Better to have this discussion today, three weeks early than two days before the deadline.
Okay. So that's, that's where we are. We are, is council ready to decide on whether we want to submit for this grant? I think that's what the decision is, correct? If we want to apply for this grant? Correct?
But there's a dollar amount to it. There, is there a way to, to divide those is, or do they need to be this? I guess we need to know what we're applying for the, the cost.
We will be applying for engineering, planning and engineering services associated with this trail and it would be not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
But we don't know exactly what that will be yet because they haven't done the work.
The, well, their engineering estimate is for what they prepare with seventy-five thousand. Yes.
So if someone like maybe myself doesn't want to spend the seventy-five thousand on that opulent, or whatever the word is, that, that type of trail used, I think Shelley's term more rustic. Like, how do we get that language in there that we're not going to spend that upper end of it? Or do you come back for the, a second approval on, on the number you're spending?
But again, my suggestion would be that you, if, if you feel that you want to, let's take it one piece at a time. If you have an interest in continuing this project, looking at engineering services or any kind of planning services associated with this project, we would move forward with this resolution. If you're looking at creating some type of a more rustic trail that may be able to be done bits at a time, we may not need to, to do that. We might be able to, to find other ways to accomplish this. You know, I, we can certainly wait. If you prefer, I will go back to Gateway. I will talk to them about the various options. We can have everything in place except the resolution and take action on April twelfth. This is an electronic submission, so we, we can have everything else ready to go. I was moving forward because I was under the impression for two years that this was a project that we, we wanted to advance. So I, I was simply moving forward with this.
It's been the topic. I mean, it's not a reason to move forward with it, but the EAC has been working very hard on this. They've made all of the, they've been talking to all of the government agencies and local politicians, which helps if they put in written support for these kinds of things. I, no, but it's up to you. I, I, I will say this. I, I would, we don't have to decide till the twelfth, but I, knowing what we know now, I would recommend applying for the grant. However, I would respectfully disagree with Bob and I think that I would feel more comfortable if it was in a lesser amount. And also that we, we kept apprised and that money doesn't get spent on anything that council isn't, you know, comfortable with.
It seems that we are definitely not ready to decide on this tonight. Am I?
I would recommend tabling until April twelfth.
And that's, that's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking. I, I'm looking for head nods, but I'm just feeling like that, you, you know, we as a group tend to really settle into our decisions much more readily than this. So I, I feel like that we maybe need to, to table this. What do you all think about that?
And I agree. And just one thing, I just, it, it's kind of correlates with some of the things and ideas the Activities Advisory Committee is considering too. And I would like to also just present it to them and get some feedback from that group as well. And that would be happening here, April, I think, second or third or, or fourth, the first Monday. So we'll be able to speak about it before then as well.
We'd love to have a recommendation from that committee also, certainly. It, it feels like to me that seventy-five thousand dollars could go a long way to starting to even build the trail, you know, to, to getting it started as opposed to just getting a big plan for the big project. Seventy-five thousand dollars seems like a lot of money to me that could, we could start. Because the first part of that, if you look at that, the first part of that would be pretty easy to do. Or at least that's how, when we walked it, it seemed. Councilmember Smith?
I, I was just going to say that, that I, I pretty much agree with Councilmember Spahnholz where that two prongs of it, at being the lower amount, but also not, you know, kind of waiting until the last minute for Bob. You know, my thought is maybe we, we say, yeah, we're going to apply to it, but we don't decide on the dollar amount until the twelfth. So at least Bob knows, you know, because our next meeting is the twelfth, this is due on the fourteenth. You know, that leaves one day, but if it's just a fill in the blank for a dollar amount. But if people aren't ready to do that, I understand that too. Just spitballing my own thought is like forty or fifty thousand instead of seventy-five, but that's just kind of a quick reaction.
There's a lot of ongoing. To Councilmember Smith's point, there is a lot of, between now and then, there will be continuing a lot of interaction with local politicians and other government agencies that we've been talking to to ensure that our, our application includes all of these wonderful glowing recommendations for us to receive this grant. So that would be the, it's, it's, I hate to have these people continuing to make these calls and push these people for their letters of recommendation and getting this package together. If, and, and it's fine if council isn't ready, but since, since Councilmember Smith brought it up, it might not be a bad idea to at least have a, a thumbs up as to whether there's even, you know, majority of council that wants to continue pursuing this.
Is, are you making a motion, Councilmember Spahnholz?
I'm not making a motion.
Well, somebody, someone, someone needs to. Someone will have to either table it or make it, or I move to do whatever. So somebody will need to make some kind of motion to have an action.
Is it possible for me to make a motion to elicit a vote from council as to their desire or not to continue the process of preparing to apply for this grant subject to a final decision being made on the twelfth?
And that's what, that's what you would say. I move and then I'd see if there is a second and then we would call for a vote.
I can't just say what I just said.
Yeah, I think that would be pretty good. Do you have it written down as an official for the minutes? Bob, you got that motion written down? I guess we can go back and listen to the recording. So the motion would be for us to continue moving forward for, to pursue this, pursue this grant. But we will vote at the next meeting to finalize it. Is that about right?
To finalize that decision as well as the amount of any approved, if approved, the amount of any grant application.
Okay, all right. So that's the motion is, I, I do have one question and you're not supposed to have questions in between the motion and the second. But if the, the reason we got this seventy-five thousand is because the engineers say that's what it costs to do it. If we say, oh no, we only agreed to fifty thousand, the engineers have said, no, it takes seventy-five thousand to do it. So we can't just tell them how much, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
We had a prior, from our prior engineers for last submission. We had, I think they were taking a much less opulent view of what and how we would do to create this, this trail. I think they had a different vision is all I can assume because the amount of the grant to do the same kind of work was, I guess around half.
Yes, they were donating parts of their time as well, I think.
Well, we can pursue.
Is there a second to the motion from Councilmember Spahnholz? All right, Councilmember Clunin, I think your hand was up more quickly. Any other comments?
I had a question. So we're voting just to proceed with it, but we get another vote on, on the amount of funding we sent, we asked for in the grant, right?
I think that's what you said, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. The council has decided collectively to remove ourselves from the North Pittsburgh Community Development Authority as well as the other members of that authority and that the same measures can be accomplished by intergovernmental agreements. So having decided that, and our town attorney looked into what, how you actually do this and first they said we need to do is to vote to direct them to take the actions necessary to dissolve this agreement. Okay, and jump in here anytime that, that you want to, Steve, I see you unmuted. So, and then the next thing would be, and this is the first two parts, and then the next part would be to appoint, we just said, our town manager, Mr. Graham, as the representative to this authority because you have to have someone who's going to be doing the act, a member of it to, to dissolve it. How am I doing with this? Okay, okay. All right. So, Councilmember Swire?
Do you, I was going to say, do you want me to read the first one then?
Um, well, let me see if there are any questions about this because this is kind of new information. Okay, then yes, read it.
Okay, move to direct the town attorney and town manager to take actions necessary to dissolve North, Northern Pittsburgh Community Development Authority.
Okay. All right, is there anything that you wanted to add to that, Steve, at all? Okay, all right. He's like, it's going swimmingly. It's no problem. Okay, all right. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there a motion to appoint a town representative?
Madam President?
Yes. Councilmember Woods?
I move to appoint Robert Grimm as the town representative to the North Pittsburgh Community Development Authority.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Smith? Okay, any questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We have, okay, I don't see any. Oh, we do have Jeff here, just in case you have any questions about this. But I think these two trucks were already in the budget, right, Bob? This is already stuff. This isn't like new money. This was, they were, remember, we were, instead of getting one big truck, we were going to get two smaller trucks because it seemed like what Public Works kind of needed better.
Yes.
But it's time to buy, it's time to buy them. But this, this, this is not new money. This is money that was already budgeted for.
Correct.
Questions about this at all?
What, is this replacing a big truck? And if it is?
This will replace one big truck with two smaller.
And then what are we doing with that big truck that's being replaced?
We will do one of two things. We will, depending on the, the condition of the vehicle when we look at it, we'll either use it as a spare when we move forward with pre-treatment program. We could slide a tank into it for a pre-treatment program, or if we prefer, we could sell it.
Sounds good.
We, it will either bring us some cash back or further use in a different capacity.
Councilmember Terrell?
Bob, the big truck requires two staff to operate it, right? Does the small truck require one each? So we're getting more productivity?
The contract still calls, well, and that, since that's a contractual matter, I'd like to discuss that further in executive session when we hold that.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to buy two big trucks? Or two small trucks? Councilmember Smith? Do you want to read the motion?
Sure. Move to approve purchase of two, two thousand twenty-two Ford F-six hundred with dump body and snowplow from Whitmoyer Auto Group Co-Stars, contract number twenty-five dash one six two.
Is there a second? Okay, Councilmember Clunin? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're buying two new trucks. Um, I will be asking for a motion to adjourn, but first I wanted to make sure that the public is aware that there will be no further council business, no further public council business this evening and that we will be breaking into executive session to discuss possible litigation. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? All right, Councilmember Woods and Councilmember Clunin, second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.